At the time is 6:00 PM. This November 17th, 2025, a regular meeting at the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Let the minutes show that all board members, with the exception of Ms. Prickrell, who was here earlier, are present and that this meeting has been called in accordance with the Texans Opens Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. All items that have been discussed, that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. I want to extend a warm welcome to everyone that's here tonight, and we are pleased that you've taken this time this evening to join us. So on behalf of the New Caney Assembly Board, we're pleased that you've been here, that you're here. We're not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. Management is a responsibility of the superintendent. So, this is a meeting in the public, not of the public, and as our guest, we welcome you to observe and listen. Again, we are pleased that you've taken this time. Thank you for your interest in New Caney ISD, and we now ask that you sign at your cell phones at this time. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Mr. Alters. Go with it. And then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to honor Texas flag, be led by Ms. Harold.
Dear Lord, we would just thank you for this day, Lord. I thank you for the opportunity to come and just serve this district. We're just thankful for the opportunity to represent the students of this district, the faculty of the district, and the taxpayers. Lord, I pray that we just make sound decisions financially, make the decisions that are needed for just student growth and that support the district. Please thank.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item number two on the agenda is consideration of approval to canvass results of the November 4th, 2025 Board of Trustee election. That's presented by Dr. Bowers.
Board, we're asking you to consider and approve the official trustee election results for both Montgomery County and Harris Counties.
Are there any questions for further discussion? Is there a motion to accept and approve the results of the November 4th, 2025 Board of Trustee election and declare the winners as Ty Trout and David Hagler?
No motion.
All right. Motion by Ms. Harold, and second by Sharp. The motion has been moved and seconded. There be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion is approved. Congratulations. The newly elected members will now take the oath of office. Let me get, as a step up front here. Angie will give the oath of office for our new members as they will take their seats.
No, I'm. I have them posed. Because I have a camera. No, you can do it. I have to 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 do it.
Congratulations, Mr. Hagler and Ty Trout. Welcome. All right. Item number three on the agenda is to reseat and reorganize the board. As the presiding officer, I will meet over the meeting as we elect a board president or open the floor up. Just want to say, it's been my pleasure to serve as your board president, but I'm gracefully stepping down from this role, and I'm happy to open that up to the floor and nominate Ms. Harold for the board president. Have any other nominations?
No. You know.
All right. So Ms. Harold's been nominated for the office of president. Are there any other further nominations of president? If not, nominations are closed. All in favor of Ms. Harold as board president, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Nope. All good.
Thank you. The floor is now open for nominations for the board vice president. Ty Trout has been nominated for the office of vice president. Are there further nominations for the office of vice president? If not, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Ty Trout for board president, please say aye. Did I say president? Oh, no, that's already done. Sorry, no, no. I'm done with it already. Sorry. Are there any, there are no further nominations for vice president? All those in favor of Ty Trout as board vice president, please say aye. Aye. And no opposed? Then Ty Trout is elected as vice president for the upcoming year. The floor is now open for nominations for board secretary. Wendy Sharp has been nominated for the office of secretary. Are there any further nominations for the office of secretary? If not, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Wendy Sharp as board secretary, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Wendy Sharp is elected again for the upcoming year as secretary. Yay! The floor is now open for nominations for assistant board secretary. Angela Tompkins has been nominated for the office of assistant secretary. Are there any further nominations for the office of assistant secretary? If not, nominations are closed. All those in favor of Angela Tompkins as board assistant secretary, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Angela Tompkins is elected as assistant secretary. Item four on the agenda is open forum. The board will now hear comments from those persons who have signed up to speak. Has anyone signed up to speak? No? Okay. We'll move on to item five. Item five on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip for New Caney High School Chair, presented by Amber Beard.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. Recently, our incredible cheer team competed at the UCA Houston Regional Competition, earning second place, and we are so very proud of them as well as their coaches. As a result of this achievement, I am requesting approval for them to go on an upcoming out-of-state trip. They have qualified to compete at the UCA National Competition, which is held every year in Orlando, Florida. This event will occur beginning Thursday, February 5th through Monday, February 9th, when they will be traveling home. They will compete in prelims on the 6th, semifinals on the 7th, and the finals will be held on February 8th. Again, this is in Orlando, Florida, at the ESPN Center. Estimated cost for the trip is going to be covered by the students. The Booster Club is working with them for multiple fundraising opportunities. We estimate that cost to be about $1,650. We're excited that 27 athletes will be competing at this competition, and traveling with them will be one of our administrators, as well as Coach Boone and Coach Von Trager. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this request. Do you have any questions for me?
Does the Booster Club and the fundraisers cover the entire cost, or is there a cost for the district?
We, there are plenty of opportunities for our athletes to be able to raise the full amount. Should that not occur, parents are going to be covering the additional cost.
And they miss how many days of school?
It will be three in total.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So, are there any questions or further discussion about the trip? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for New Caney High School Chair? Second. The motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Say no. The motion is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you, and go Eagles!
Item six on the agenda is consideration for an out-of-state trip for West Fork High School Chair, presented by Bridget Heine.
Good morning, or afternoon, good night, good afternoon. The West Fork High School Cheer Team has qualified for an opportunity to compete as well at the UCA National Cheerleading Championship in Orlando, Florida. This is an outstanding accomplishment, and your consideration of this trip will allow our cheer team to represent West Fork High School at a national level and New Caney ISD, providing valuable experiences for our cheerleaders and their team in leadership, teamwork, and athletic excellence. We ask again the same dates, February 5th through the 9th. Coaches will attend, and New Caney ISD Administrator will attend. The cost will be covered by the athlete and fundraising opportunities. Several fundraiser opportunities are scheduled to help offset the cost of that. Again, departing the 5th, returning to Houston on the 9th. We respectfully request the Board of Trustees' approval for this out-of-state travel to the UCA National Championship in Orlando, Florida. Do you guys have any additional questions, things that you might have thought of before Ms. Beard sat down?
Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip for West Fork High School Chair? In a second. The motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further, whoops, already said that. Sorry. All those in favor, we got that. Everybody's in favor, so it passes. We didn't vote. Okay, we're all gonna vote. Everybody want them to go on the trip? Say yes. Aye. We're going. Y'all get to go on the trip. Congratulations. Item seven on the agenda is reports and proposals of board members. Do we have any reports or proposals from board members? I would like to welcome Mr. Hagler to the group, and we're excited to have you and bring up fresh perspective. That's all I have. Anybody else?
Item eight on the agenda is the superintendent's report, presented by Mr. Bowers.
Yes, ma'am. As we do every month, got a couple of recognitions, so I would like to start off with New Caney Elementary and have Ms. Sessa and her team come on down.
Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to recognize some astounding individuals from New Caney Elementary. We appreciate your continued support for our students, our staff, and the important work happening on our campus and in our district. It is an honor to highlight these individuals and celebrate their contributions to our school community. I would like to start with Kimberly Ken. Come over a little bit. Ms. Ken is a tremendous asset to our kitchen team. She works remarkably hard each day and shows care for our students. She is a natural team leader who collaborates well with others and models a strong work ethic. She is reliable, supportive, and brings a positive attitude to every task. I truly value having her in our kitchen because she is easy to work with, and she's always committed to ensuring our students are well taken care of. Thank you. Next is Adalia Lima. Ms. Lima is a devoted and dependable member of our custodial team. She consistently maintains a high standard of care for our campus and is always willing to assist the night shift whenever support is needed. Her longstanding commitment to our school is evident in everything she does, and her positive presence makes a meaningful difference each day. We are grateful for her many years of service at our NCE community. The next individual we are recognizing is Olga Lopez. Ms. Lopez has been an essential member of our specialized support team. She consistently strives to do her best, supports the teachers and students she serves, and goes above and beyond for the entire special education team. She exemplifies what it means to be a hardworking and dedicated paraprofessional. Ms. Lopez is always willing to step in wherever she is needed, whether it's an Aspire classroom, ECSE, really anywhere we need her. We appreciate her commitment to our campus and our students. The next individual we are recognizing is Kayla Green. Ms. Green has been an incredible blessing to our campus this year. She was originally a behavior support teacher, but when we were still facing a vacancy in our Aspire, a self-contained special education classroom at the start of the year, she immediately volunteered to step into that role, and I didn't even have to beck her. Even with only a few days to prepare for Meet the Teacher, the first day of school, she had her classroom fully ready and welcoming. It is clear that this is the role she was meant to be in, and I tell her that every day, hoping she will stay in Aspire for next year. Because those are hard roles to fill. Her classroom is well organized, her structures are firmly in place, and her students know all the routines and procedures with confidence. She is patient, caring, and a wonderful teammate to the entire Aspire staff. Thank you, Ms. Green, for stepping out of your comfort zone and doing what's best for kids. Thank you. I really appreciate it. And this is my favorite part, no offense, staff, but it is my absolute pleasure to introduce Guadalupe Soto. Guadalupe is one of our fifth grade students, and she has been at NCE since pre-K. When you think about a truly outstanding student, qualities such as kindness, compassion, determination, brightness, and friendliness often come to mind. Guadalupe embodies each of these characteristics. She is exactly the kind of student who makes our school a better place. Here are just a few things some of her teachers have said about her. I absolutely agree that Guadalupe should be recognized. She comes to school every day with an incredible attitude and a genuine love for learning. It has been a privilege to watch Guadalupe grow over the years into a young person who truly exemplifies the very best of our school community. She approaches every challenge with determination, works hard without needing recognition, and consistently shows kindness in both her words and actions. Guadalupe is an exceptionally gifted artist, but her true beauty shines far beyond her talent. She leads our art classroom with kindness, confidence, and especially a gentle spirit that inspires others. Guadalupe reminds us of the incredible potential within all of our students. Her character, her work ethic, and her genuine kindness set a powerful example for others. She represents the very best of NCE, and we are honored to celebrate her tonight. Thank you very much.
While they're getting their pictures done over there, I'd like to recognize Ms. Tom Haye and her staff from Sorters Mill Elementary. Y'all wanna come on down?
Thank you so much for this opportunity to be able to recognize just some incredible people at Sorters Mill Elementary. If you are here to stand up and, well, no, if you are here, please stand up from Sorters Mill Elementary. We've got our cheering section. We always do. All right. We love to be able to support one another at SME. All right. First up is Stephanie Nielsen. Okay, y'all, if sunshine had a name, it would be Stephanie. She is always smiling, optimistic, and spreading kindness. Stephanie is a new cafeteria manager at SME this year. Whether she is greeting students, helping parents, or supporting her team, she keeps our cafeteria running like a well-oiled machine and somehow makes even the busiest days, like Thanksgiving meal, seem very calm. She is attentive and patient, and she has a way of making everyone feel seen and cared for. Her cheerful spirit, steady leadership, and huge heart make a big difference every single day at SME. We're so grateful for the warmth and positivity you bring to our Tiger family, Stephanie. You make kindness look effortless. Congratulations.
Next up is Gudelia Rojas. Gudelia is the kind of person every campus hopes for. She is reliable, uplifting, and always one step ahead as our custodian. She keeps everything running smoothly and somehow makes hard work look effortless. Whether she is helping students or supporting staff, she brings an energy that lifts the entire school. Simply put, Gudelia is the glue and the sparkle that keeps our campus shining. Gudelia's sister works at SME as well. Here's what her sister has to say. This could be risky. My sister Gudelia is the oldest, but the youngest-looking one. We're starting off strong. She's always been the kind of person who gives her all, not just to her work, but to the people around her. She loves her nieces and nephews. She treats every single one of them as her own. She might be clumsy at times, there it is, but we love her very much. Well, Martha says that Gudelia's a little clumsy. We'll just call it enthusiastically in motion. Whether she's tripping, slipping, or just moving at the speed of kindness, Gudelia always lands on her feet and with a smile. Congratulations, Ms. Gudelia. You make SME a better place every day. Congratulations. Next up is Jessica Showquist. Jessica is one of the hardest-working and kindest people you will ever meet. She is equal parts heart and hustle. She joined SME as a bilingual paraprofessional, quietly changing lives one small group at a time through MTSS. It did not take long for Jessica and the rest of us to realize she was destined for the classroom. To get one step closer to her dream, she moved into a bilingual pre-K paraprofessional role, and that is where the magic really took off. Her U of H supervisor practically skips down the hall when he visits, eager to tell me how incredible she is. According to him, Jessica earned some of the highest observation scores of all of his students. We were good friends until he suggested she explore other districts for experience. Let's just say I told him he could admire her talent, but he could not recruit it. Jessica, in her trademark grace, told him she would rather wait for an opening here at SME. That is loyalty you can't teach. Jessica is the definition of a team player. She keeps the classroom running smoothly, sings songs with full Disney princess energy, and somehow gets over 20 tiny humans to line up, smile, and listen at the same time. In short, she is a rock star in sneakers, and we are so lucky that she calls SME home. All right. And then we have our fifth-grade student, Denori Hampton. Denori is a fifth grader at SME. She has been a bright presence at our school since the moment she first walked through our doors as a little tyke, right? Oh, even then, she carried herself with a maturity that stood out in the best possible way. She leads by example, not because she is asked to, but because it is simply who she is. Whether she is speaking with confidence on the morning announcements or gently guiding our pre-K students down the hallway, she brings that same steady, thoughtful leadership to every role she is given. You can place her in front of a microphone in a classroom or anywhere on campus, and she rises to the moment with poise, responsibility, and a genuine desire to help others. Her commitment to our community is easy to see in her involvement with SME Honor Choir and our Student Leadership Program. Watching her grow academically, socially, and as a leader over these past six years has been nothing short of inspiring. Remember the name Denori. She is destined for great things, and there is no doubt that she will shine wherever she goes. Congratulations. And now we have our teacher. This is Claudia Temez. We were lucky enough to snag Ms. Claudia Temez from Spring ISD back in 2020. With her strong background in reading instruction, we originally placed her in an upper grade, and she did well, but it didn't take long to realize her true superpower. This woman could teach a rock to read, and that rock would leave her class with a library card and a favorite author, for sure. Claudia is the kind of teacher who nerds out, in the best way, over research. She's always chasing new strategies, digging into data, and asking, "But what if we tried this?" She's also one of SME's strongest school-to-home connectors. Recently, I walked by the cafeteria and couldn't help but smile. The room was buzzing with parents at session two of her parent workshop, Reading is an Act of Love. There she was, with her dual-language reading sidekick, Ms. Morales, coaching parents on how to build readers for life. If that weren't enough, she's also a key player in Parenting Partners, helping families strengthen communication, confidence, and connection, and probably sneaking in a book recommendation or two along the way. I am so grateful to celebrate a quiet leader who makes a loud impact, someone who embodies excellence in everything she does and inspires her teammates to stretch their thinking. She shows every single day that growing readers takes heart, humor, and a whole lot of love. Congratulations, Claudia.
month, but I assure you, behind all of these folks y'all see every month, there is an equally great and impressive administrator. And so, we decided, as a cabinet, that there was something we needed to do to recognize those folks behind the scenes that just make our campuses run the way they run. And so, with that said, we're gonna start recognizing two administrators from the elementary level and two administrators from the secondary level, once in the fall and once in the spring. If y'all recall, last year, or the past couple of years, we went through a process with the Holdsworth Center and developed our leadership definition for the district. And what that is, is just qualities and traits and things that we see that make leaders who they are in New Caney ISD. It's the it factor, is what we call it. And so, at this time... And so at this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Kandarko and Ms. Land. If y'all would come forward and recognize our first administrators to be recognized during this new format. So if y'all want to come on up and announce your two.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert and the school board, for allowing this opportunity to just recognize a few of the amazing administrators we have in this district. It was very hard for our cabinet to make this decision, so that's a good problem to have, right? So this person builds excellence, takes initiative, anticipates challenges, recognizes opportunities, identifies solutions, and implements effective strategies. Specifically, this principal has demonstrated grit and resilience while navigating significant challenges, from unexpected enrollment to opening a new school building next school year. Her ability to remain patient, professional, and solution-focused in these difficult circumstances clearly reflects initiative, perseverance, and proactive problem-solving in the face of adversity. She consistently advocates for both students and teachers, ensuring that every decision supports the whole child while protecting the instructional conditions teachers need to thrive. Above all, she leads with a genuine heart for children, ensuring every student feels seen, valued, and supported each day. And this principal that we are recognizing is Ms. Raquel Sessa from New Caney Elementary. Okay, so the next person that we're recognizing is an assistant principal at the elementary level. Also builds excellence, focuses on student success, takes personal responsibility for continuous student growth through self-reflection and database decision-making. When leadership support was needed, this assistant principal stepped forward with confidence and composure. She led crucial instructional conversations, ensuring that teaching and learning remained focused and intentional. Her collaborative leadership kept the campus aligned with its goals and demonstrated her unwavering commitment to building excellence, focusing on student success. Through her initiative and instructional leadership, she empowered others while sustaining a culture of continuous improvement for all learners. This is Ms. Becky Rowlett from Sorters Mill Elementary.
Congratulations, ladies. Good evening. Thank you to Mr. Calvert and the school board for giving us this opportunity to recognize two outstanding secondary administrators who reflect the very best of our district. Both of these exceptional leaders consistently exemplify what true educational leadership looks like. Their commitment, character, and passion not only elevate their campuses, but also inspire everyone of us to strive for excellence in our own roles. As we recognize them today, let this also serve as a reminder that leadership is not defined solely by a title, but by purpose, service, and daily action. We are grateful for their courage, compassion, and unwavering dedication to doing what is best for their students, staff, and their school community. Want to share a few words of what their campus leadership team said about these great leaders on their campus. And so we're going to start with Ms. Autumn Jackson, and these words were shared by her principal, Ms. Crystal Mays. Ms. Jackson's outstanding dedication and leadership within our school community is a standard of excellence like no other. She consistently demonstrates compassion, professionalism, and a deep commitment to student success. She goes above and beyond to support both students and staff, whether it's through mentoring teachers, organizing programs that build a positive school culture, or taking time to listen and respond thoughtfully to individual concerns. Her calm and fair approach to problem-solving helps create an environment where everyone feels valued and heard. We are truly fortunate to have Ms. Jackson as part of our leadership team, and I want to express sincere appreciation for the difference she continues to make each day. And I'd like to add that she has been doing this with a man down on her team, and she's been doing this kind of by herself with Ms. Mays as the sole assistant principal at White Oak Middle School. So, Ms. Autumn Jackson. Next, I'd like to recognize the principal of West Fork High School, Ms. Bridget Heine. And these words come from her dean, Ms. Jennifer Tatum. I've had the privilege of opening West Fork High School alongside Ms. Heine and learning from her over the past three years as we built a model campus together. Her ability to pair vision with purpose has shaped West Fork into the academically strong and nurturing community it is today. Every detail of our campus, from its systems to its spirit, reflects her heart, faith, and steady leadership. Ms. Heine embodies what strong female leadership looks like, balancing confidence with compassion and vision with grace. She has left an edible mark on West Fork, on every campus she has served, and across New Caney ISD as a whole. I'd also like to share words from one of her instructional coaches. Ms. Heine has truly changed my life. Her kindness, high expectations, and deep care for students and staff inspire me every day. Watching her lead by always rolling up her sleeves and never shying away from hard work has shown me the kind of leader I want to be. Thank you, Ms. Heine, for believing in me and showing me the power of compassion, fearless leadership. And I hope, not me, Ms. Heine, because I can never be you, but your instructional coach hopes someday to be half the leader that you are. So, Ms. Heine, congratulations.
I appreciate y'all's leadership you show us every day and your compassion for our kids and our staff. Again, we'll be doing this in the spring, so we'll be looking forward to see who those folks are then. So, congratulations, y'all. All right, one more agenda item for me tonight. I'm going to ask Dr. Kandarko if he will step back up here. Y'all know we're always looking for ways to get better, to do what's best for kids, and listen to our staff. Just strike that balance every day around here and every year around here. So even though we're sitting here in November 2025, we are working on things for the '26-'27 school year. And one of those things that we, as a cabinet, the academic deans, the high school principals, Dr. Kandarko and his team, Dr. Mesmer, they've been working on is a high school schedule for next year, changing it a little bit from where it is now. Again, we think this is what's best for our kids and our teachers. So I'm going to let Dr. Kandarko kind of walk everybody through what that's going to look like for the '26-'27 school year in our high schools.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. So as we approach the end of our second year, being on an eight-class schedule, we've had some challenges as we face through the state of Texas, which asks us to intervene with those students that aren't doing what needs to be done on the EOCs and the STARS. And so we kind of put our heads together as a committee. We started off with directors and executive directors and some principals in the room to just kind of overlay and just kind of look at possibilities of how we can use the current schedule that we have now, but also be creative in a way that we can build in an intervention period and at the same time, maybe gain some minutes for exams and for testing. And so with that committee, we took to Mr. Calvert, keeping an eight-period day schedule. However, with speaking with Mr. Carroll, our executive director of operations, he's allowed us to kind of add some minutes to the day, to kind of give us more minutes in each period. And so with that said, we've been able to add 15 minutes to the high school day. And so with that, we've been able to gain a few minutes in each classroom, which goes from 45 minutes to approximately 47 minutes in seven of the classes. And then the one class period that's tied to lunch, of course, that's a little bit longer just because of that extra 30 minutes that we have to have for the lunches. And so we've looked at doing that for the week, on Monday, Tuesday, and Friday. And then on Wednesday and Thursday, being creative, we have kind of gone to like a modified block. So on Wednesday, we're looking at going periods one through four, and then on Thursday, we'd go five through eight. And in those periods, we would have 90 minutes in each period, which would give students opportunities to take tests, to do labs and science classes. And also in that day, because of our 90-minute period, we also have a time to have a 40-minute period of intervention. So those students that need that intervention time can go to that intervention period. But also, at the same time, the students that have done what they need to do to meet the standards of the state, we would be able to schedule those students into a class to where they could be in a class that they enjoy being in a little bit longer. So like if they're in welding, they could be in welding an extra 40 minutes, which leads right back into that next period that they would be going into. And so doing that, I think, it meets the needs of what we really want to do for our teachers, to give them a full 90 minutes to plan for PLC model, because that is really hard right now. It's a big challenge for our high school and our middle schools to plan in that 45 minutes that they have currently. But with that Wednesday and Thursday having a 90-minute period, they would have the opportunity to plan with their team for 90 minutes and also use that time to, again, intervene and at the same time, use that time for longer tests with AP and their labs and sciences. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer any that I can.
So the belief is your core classes, you're going to get more time on Wednesday, Thursday, than Monday, Tuesday, Friday, you'll just get the additional, you'll go to 47 minutes?
Yes, sir. So in a two-week period, you're still, you're kind of going the same amount of time we're going now, except with the allotted time that they've allowed us to add to the day. We do have that two minutes extra day. So you're going about another 30 minutes every two weeks to those other classrooms. But what that allows us to do is have that extra time on that Wednesday and Thursday to really, because right now, like when we take our district assessments or we're trying to take AP practice exam, that 45 minutes is a big crunch. And sometimes we have to separate that into two days to get those finished. And so with this having a 90-minute period, those students would be able to come in and get that time to take those tests. And then also with, you know, one thing I felt to mention is by adding these minutes to the day, it allows us to have some more PD days during the school year for our teachers. Because right now, it's a really tight schedule on how many days we can have for PD, but this allows extra days for PD. And then it also allows, because of where our graduations land, we're not penalized when our seniors aren't there that last week of school because we built in, I believe it's 10 extra days for the school year with that 15 minutes added each day throughout the school year.
Okay. Do we have data that backs it? Is there another district close by that does this type of schedule? And do we have data that backs this up, or is this a new thing or just trying?
So UMBLE has done it in the past. However, we're really, this is something that we're just, we're trying to look to see. Because again, one of the biggest challenges, Mr. Alters, with what the state asks us is HB 1416, with, you know, they're asking us to get 30 hours with the students that don't pass their EOC. We're asked to accumulate 30 hours of intervention for these students. And so when we have that 45-minute time allotted right now, we cannot take away from 45 minutes because of what CTE demands us to have. We have to have 45 minutes for each class period, and we can't take those times away. So right now, we're either having to find that little bit of like 15, 20 minutes within that lunch period time because it's a little bit longer. But it's a big challenge just because, you know, kids are at lunch, and then we're asking them to come back. And then, you know, by the time they get in and sit down, you really, you know, you might have 10, maybe 10 to 12 minutes to get that done. But with this schedule, we're hoping that with the 40-minute intervention period, we are really honing in and really having a true intervention period to really help these students pass that STAR test in December or June or whenever it may be that they take it again the second time.
Okay. And how long is this trial period? We're going to do it for one year, two years, five years?
We've talked about giving an opportunity to look at it for the next couple of years and just kind of, you know, looking at the data over the next couple of years and see if it is making a difference at our schools. And, you know, and at the same time, in two years, the STAR is going to change as well. So there should might be some things that the state's asking us to do differently. So that'd be a good time to relook at this and see if we need to make changes or keep doing what we're doing.
Awesome. Well, thank you. I appreciate you looking into this and trying something new for our students. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So what we've done is, just so it doesn't affect the buses, it's for the high school. So we're going to start 10 minutes earlier because, you know, that still allows all the buses to still get there on time to drop all the students off, and then we'll just stay five minutes later. So those, you know, according to Mr. ... Yeah, Mr. Carroll. Mr. Carroll, he said, you know, with us adding five minutes to the end of the day, it still allows the students, now the students, all the buses should be at all the high schools because they're the second dismissal. It'll allow all the buses to be at the high school to where, you know, because right now, we're having to wait anyway, a few minutes. So right now, they would all be there, so they would just get on the bus and head out to their routes to get to the elementaries on time.
So that would be 7:10, or 7:05 would be the start time?
For high school?
Yeah.
It would be 7:35.
7:35, okay.
So this is just high school, not middle school?
Not middle school, no, just high school.
A panel, how many, who comprised that panel?
So, specific names?
No.
So there was a, to begin, to begin the panel, we want to have a variety of people in the room that had all aspects of the school day. So we had fine arts directors, we had athletics, we had actual other instructional executive directors in the room, and then we had a couple of principals, high school principals in the room to help us with the first committee. Then, once we developed the plan, then we took it to Mr. Calvert. And then once he said, "Okay, this looks good, now let's take it to the principals." And he sat in the room with us with all of the high school principals, and we all looked at it together. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine on the agenda is the Consent Calendar, consisting of consideration of minutes, finance reports, and purchasing reports. Are there any questions or further discussion about the items on the Consent Calendar? Is there a motion to approve the items on the Consent Calendar? It's been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Item 10 on the agenda is consideration of approval of CPR number one for Highlands Middle School for fencing changes per developer presented by Mr. Wrestler.
Good evening, everyone. So I'd like for y'all to consider CPR number one for Highlands Middle School. This change includes adding privacy pickets along the south end of our property line where the existing houses are. It's basically slats in our chain link fence that we've already got planned. And so it's adding those privacy slats. And then it is some additional rod iron fencing and some additional stone columns that we were trying to avoid, but we knew the developer standards required them. But we were hoping to get an allowance from that. And we worked it out. We kind of met in the middle with what they wanted versus what we're actually going to do as far as the Highlands group. So I will say that they were, they didn't make us do 100% of what we should according to their standards for commercial, which we don't consider, we don't really consider ourselves commercial anyway. We're an educational institution. But it did get over our 50,000 threshold by a little bit. So we wanted to bring it to y'all to officially, hopefully, consider and approve tonight for us.
Were these specs included when it was bid out? We didn't ask them to, we didn't bid that fence when we bid.
The developer review took place kind of concurrently with our bidding. We were still working on exactly what we were doing with some of our fencing. And so, no, this was not handled prior to bid, which is unfortunately why it's coming to y'all now. It's just sometimes it's difficult to get everyone in the room to agree to things. And then they've had some personnel changes too at the Highlands group, and that's kind of led to some of the length of time here on getting this back to y'all.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve CPR one for Highlands Middle School for fencing? Highlands Middle School for fencing changes per the developer? A second? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will now be taken. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved. Item 11 on the agenda is consideration of approval for CPR number 40 for Pine Valley Middle School re-roof for soffit repair and replacement presented by Mr. Wrestler.
Thank y'all again. I'd like for y'all to consider CPR 40 for Pine Valley Middle School, the soffit repair replacement. This is an unforeseen scope of work that we feel like we're, we need to do. It's as a result of an old soffit, a portion of that failed during our re-roof. No, no fault or anything of the roofers themselves, just due to age and some wood rotting on a portion of the school. And so we've had architects and engineers look at the soffit, and everyone of those experts agree that we do need to replace the soffit in the entirety around the school, just as a safety, being number one for our students. We just feel like not only do we need to repair and replace the portion that unfortunately failed, but we do need to go ahead and replace it around the entirety of the building. Oh, yes, all this was from the original, the portions of this that was pre-fire. Now, we, yes, some of those portions were in the fire area that were repaired, but until we get into it, we don't, we're not able to see exactly how it was rebuilt. We know it looks the same as the original. And so we're, we can only assume that that portion that was rebuilt was done in the same form and fashion as the original building was. And just, it, it could have been fastened better to the supporting structures when it was originally built. And because of that, we just feel as the campus ages, and we all know wood doesn't last forever. It is truly a biodegradable product. And so we, we just feel it's necessary to come up with a different, different plan and different, different approach to this soffit. We're going to go back with some, some different framing, and we're going to square it off and put metal on it so that we don't, it'd be much, much lighter. And we'll be, we're able to do some waterproofing and some more air barriers too. And we'll actually work to help improve our efficiency in the building as a whole, but especially in our two big gym areas. We've had some moisture and humidity issues in there for years. And unfortunately, this event was able to highlight some of those inefficiencies that were in that rooftop area there and that envelope. So we're going to be able to improve the efficiency of the building as well by, by doing this.
That fire was in 1985, wasn't it? Yeah. There was a fire there in Thanksgiving, 1985, so 40 years ago. So whatever work they did, it's kind of, I would say they did a pretty good job.
Codes have changed just a little bit too since then as well, so.
And that was pre-my time. I wasn't in high school. I was in middle school. Thank you. Okay. So are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve CPR 40 for Pine Valley Middle School re-roof and soffit repair and replacement? It's been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed say no. The motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Wrestler. Oh, one more.
One more.
Item 12 on the agenda is consideration for approval of a project delivery method or contract award method of construction manager at risk for Porter High School Phase Three presented by Mr. Wrestler.
Thank you. No money involved in this one. So hopefully a cost savings. This method is not known to necessarily have a cost savings, but it's for the project as a whole at Porter High School, the work we have to do there as a whole. Being able to do it in steps or in packages is something that we, once we got the architect on board, and thank y'all for that back in May, we've been working with them on a solution, our delivery method for this project. And we just feel like using the construction manager at risk process will allow us to, we already know kind of what we want to do in portions of the work that's required there. And so we want to be able to just get that work sent out pretty quick. And then we're able to, while we're doing that, take time and work on design of the new band hall and the fine art spaces and some of the other renovations that are part of the bond. And so by doing this method, it'll let us put it out in multiple packages and allow us to, to really take the time we need to design the new spaces and the renovations within the main building that we need to, while not trying to rush to hurry up and get some of these other things done that the schools have been waiting on. We all know equity is a big, a big word amongst our high schools. And Porter High School is now our only high school that doesn't have turf on some of their playing fields. And so this will give us the ability to go ahead and take care of turfing the baseball, softball, and football fields at the, at the campus and get started on our cover pavilion car, sorry, cover multipurpose practice facility. We have several names for it. Pavilion is just, just one of them. But this method will let us kind of get those two packages. We'll probably package those in two separate packages, just because of the length of time it'll take to make, to do those projects. But it still allows us to have time to design the rest of it while not trying to rush that process, to hurry up and get out to bid if we did it all as one big package. So we just, us and the architects and my team in construction, and Mr. Calvert, of course, is aware that we'd like for you to consider this method.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve project delivery method, contract award method of construction manager at risk for Porter High School Phase Three? It has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. The motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 13 on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. The time is 6:58. The board ended its closed meeting at 8:13 PM, and we will now reconvene and open section. Item 14 on the agenda is consideration of personnel report by Christine Gates.
Good evening. So this is our monthly recommendation for all of our resignations, terminations, professional contract employees, as well as any adult employees, and you can have a list in your board book with an addendum on rate assignment for trade terms, which is our monthly personnel recommendation. If you think you consider that appropriate.
Are there any questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the personnel report? The motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item 15 on the agenda is consideration of resolution casting votes for candidates for the board of directors of Montgomery Central Appraisal District. I move that we nominate Frank Smith as a candidate to the board of directors of Montgomery Central Appraisal District. It's been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item 16 on the agenda is future discussion topics. Anybody have any topics they'd like to add in future discussions? Need this?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see if we could get the minors director team to come and give us an overview of what's been going on in fine arts this year. It sounds like we've been having a lot of good things happen, so I'd love to have a presentation of what's been going on.
Like from the director, would you?
From the director, his appointee. Just, just an update, I heard that three bands with the area. We've got one choir that won, it's equivalent to state.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, I'd like to just kind of hear a little bit more about what's going on there.
And the visual department would be in there too.
Yeah, great.
Okay, that's all. Great. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, there being no further business, the meeting has been adjourned at 8:15.